We'll call the regular meeting in the New Ulm City Council for November twenty first, two thousand seventeen, four thirty P M. The order. First items on agendas, your consent agenda items, what your wishes on those?
I'll offer motion to approve those.
Second. We got a motion and a second to prove to consent agenda items. Any discussion on any? Seeing none. Entertainer motion approved.
Oh, we did.
Oh, sorry. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? No. Motion carries. Item number two A. Conduct a public hearing to consider a resolution adopting the final assessment rules for the two thousand sixteen Utility Street and Alley Improvement Group One. Got anything on that, Steve?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. The city council has scheduled a public hearing for the final assessment rules for the large project of the two thousand sixteen season, the Utility Street and Alley Improvement Group. I think we've got, uh, I went too fast there, like twelve areas. I've received probably half a dozen phone calls. We received one letter of objection on Alley sixty nine south of center, which is number six on your list. Um, so you could open up the public hearing if you'd like.
Okay. We'll open up the public hearing. Anybody have anything, or should we just take them one by one? Looks like nobody's in here.
Doesn't look like there's a lot of attendance, so you could probably just ask.
Okay. Does anybody ever, anybody have anything on it, other than the one that we got written, ready? Seeing nothing? Entertainer motion. But this is public hearing, yeah. Still gotta close, public hearing, approve it.
Do we wanna read? Do you want me to read the letter?
The letter into the record?
Go ahead, read it in, Nicole.
And this has to do with Alley sixty nine south of center, number six on the list.
Consider this my written objection to the cost of the assessment being assessed to my property, Lot eleven, block sixty nine, south of center, for the alley pavement, et cetera. My reasoning for my objection is because the reconstruction just made my existing problem worse than what it was for, from the first time you guys reconstructed the alley years ago. Every time it rains or s- or snow melts, I have a swi- swimming pool behind the alley and my garage because of how high the alley is compared to my property. As my garage was the first one on our block when the alleys were lower, they should have taken it, that into consideration when they raised the alley years ago. Everyone else on our block was built after the alleys were raised. I asked Steve when they were done, why they didn't put a drain in like they did in the next block, and he said the cost would have been too expensive for just one property with the problem. Then he said I could resolve the problem myself by raising my driveway. That would be a solution if I could afford to do that, but at this time that is not feasible. If that was a solution for me, why couldn't they have raised my driveway with the tarring work? I'm sure that would have been less costly than putting the drain in. Sincerely, Mark Royger.
Mr. President, if you'd like, we've got a few slides we could share with you of that particular alley to show you the condition, and then if you have any particular questions, I could attempt to answer it if you prefer.
Go ahead.
So, uh, Joe Stad, I'm just bringing up the first slide. This is, uh, the existing condition prior to reconstruction in nineteen sixty nine. This alley's located between Third and Fourth South, Broadway on the east and Minnesota Street on the west. As you look down, you can tell there's rainy conditions, but for the most part, the alley drains pretty well. It's maybe hard to see, but there's a lot of block cr- cracking, and the pavement management rating is about a five on a scale of zero to hundred, with zero being the worst. It was constructed originally in nineteen seventy one, so at this time it's forty-five years old and really needs to be reconstructed. Okay, Joe, move on to the next one. This shows the, uh, the, the letter, the ownership, where the letter came from. This is Lot eleven, in the middle of a block on the, on the west side. Uh, Broadway is up the hill from this alley, and you can tell he's got a low area in front of the garage, and it's been that way since nineteen seventy one. Uh, I look back at the original construction plans, and the alley was not raised, nor was it ever raised, to the best of my knowledge. It actually was lowered a foot on each end. You can go to the next slide, Joe. Now, this is after we reconstructed it in two thousand and sixteen. You can show, see that it's, uh, it's been raining. You can't tell very well, but it has been. It's draining quite well. All the, uh, the garages and everything else, except for that particular property, match quite well. And then you can show the last one, Joe, and that again is the lowest spot in front of the gentleman's, the property owner's garage. We haven't changed the grade of the alley or the elevation, so it all stayed the same as far as I can tell. Uh, up to Broadway and down to the alley, it's about ten feet of elevation change, so there's plenty of opportunity for the property owner to, uh, fill that area in and kick the water out. I had estimated the cost of a storm sewer at about eighteen thousand dollars. I discussed it with the property owner and told him he was the only one that, uh, that benefited and that he, he didn't wanna bear that cost, so that's why we didn't do anything in that particular area. I don't know if you have any other questions, but, uh, the, uh, this, the benefit that was assigned on the special assessment is for the benefit of the alley reconstruction. He has no parking on Broadway. He has no access other than the alley. I just think it's, uh, clear that the benefit of what, about nineteen hundred and sixty dollars is, is justified.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Not hearing any. I'll offer a motion to close the public hearing and consider the resolution adopting the final assessment rules for the two thousand sixteen Utility Street and Alley Improvements Group One. Thank you for the pictures, and I think that really helps understand this situation as well.
And a second that, and get just a thought on it, you know, I mean, if we're going back to Steve's records and if we haven't raised the, the grade, you know, I mean, it's, and if we're gonna have to put a drain in, we're gonna have to even go even lower, you know, to accommodate that, and right now, you probably have a natural crown on the center of the alley to probably go both directions towards the side streets, probably by looking at it.
Correct, yes.
So, that would have been a lot more reconstruction, so. Yeah.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I've been trying to go through the rules here, and Steve, I think you'd identified the amount of the benefit and the assessment. Might be appropriate for the council to make a determination that the benefit is present in that amount to justify.
Just for that particular parcel?
I think no one else has challenged them, but, uh, I think just because that objection was raised, it would be wise to do so.
I can certainly amend my motion to that effect.
Second.
Lot eleven, block sixty nine, south of center, the, the final benefit calculation is one thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty-five cents.
So amend.
And as stated in the resolution, it's at three point two percent simple interest on the unpaid balance over ten years.
Okay, thank you, Steve. We have a motion and a second offered a resolution, waived the reading, closing the public hearing, and adopted assessment rules as stated. Any more discussion? Seeing none. Finance Director, please call the roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item number three A. Consider motion approving the issuance of a lawful gambling permit for the Sioux Trails Ducks Unlimited Chapter to conduct raffle gambling at the New Ulm Country Club. And that's for January twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen. Motion to approve.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? No. Motion carries. Item number four A, number one and two. Consider an ordinance amending section two point nine nine of the city code, city of New Ulm, relative to schedule of city fees. Second reading of ordinance number seventeen dash zero two zero, fifth series, and a motion to adopt ordinance numbers seventeen dash zero two zero, fifth series. Roger.
Ordinance number seventeen zero two zero, fifth series, city of New Ulm, Brown County, Minnesota, and ordinance amending section two point nine nine of the city code of the city of New Ulm relative to schedule of city fees. Be ordained by the city council of the city of New Ulm. Section one, that section two point nine nine of the city code of the city of New Ulm is hereby amended to read as follows. Section two point nine nine, schedule of city fees. The attached schedule of se- of fees for city permits, licenses, documents, facilities, use, services, et cetera, is hereby adopted effective January one, two thousand eighteen, to remain in effect unless and until amended by the city council. This schedule shall supersede fees previously set by resolution as to items listed thereon. However, the adoption of this schedule shall not be construed to nullify or prohibit adoption or modification of fees by resolution of the city council or appropriate board or commission of the city for items not listed on this schedule. Section two, that this ordinance shall take effect and shall be enforced on the later of January one, two thousand eighteen, or thirty days from and after its adoption, approval, and publication.
Thank you.
Since the first reading, we did change the fire department, the, the rental inspection fee. We increased that from fifteen to thirty dollars.
But I think we were proposing that a report be brought back from the fire chief regarding what other cities might have charged. Do you have that, Chief Mako?
Oh, well, you can see that. Um, we, uh, Fire Chief Paul Mako, uh, counselors.
I can't see any of that.
The, uh, comparison we did, um, we tried to pick out some cities that were comparable to size. Um, we tried to get all over the state. Um, and this is what we came up with. If you notice, the New Ulm is at the top. It's, um, the annual fee per unit, per one unit is fifteen dollars. Hutchinson is twenty dollars. Branded is thirty-two. Um, Worthington, um, they've got some administration fees and things like that in there. And then, uh, a lot of them have like first-time rental fees and things like that, so they're all just a little bit different. The first, uh, three are just a flat per unit. Uh, the other ones, um, uh, the first unit is a hundred dollars, and after you get to.
Oh, could you adjust the enlarging on that, so it's still a bit easier to see?
It's not clear back here at all.
There we go. Thank you.
Okay. Now, those are some of the, those are the first, uh, fees that you see. Um, and if you go this way, it lists the towns, and, and then some of them, the more units you have, um, the price goes down. There's an initial fee, and then there's, uh, prices after that. So what we did is we took the annual fee for the one unit and then the annual fee for twenty units. Um, we have a lot of places that are more than twenty units, so. I think, uh, you know, when you look at the number of fees and stuff that, uh, what they're charging, I think our, our fifteen dollar fee is, is relatively low in comparison to what they have here.
It's not even relatively low. It's way low.
Yeah.
It's at the bottom of the barrel, right?
Yeah. It's at the bottom.
Yep, we're, we're down at the bottom.
So you're recommending what?
Um, the next, next closest one, I, I believe, is Hutchinson, and they've got twenty dollars per unit.
Okay. So we're recommending, you're recommending what?
Thirty dollars.
Well, I would recommend a, I would recommend a raise, and how you wanna implement that, I guess, is up to you. Do you wanna do, um, the, um, she's got listed doubling it to thirty dollars per unit, you know? I guess that's up to you. You can do ten dollars or five and five and five.
I've got a question for the fire chief. Would you be opposed if, if the city took, did like a two-year fee schedule?
No.
In my mind, I'm actually gonna take some of the blame for this when I was a building official. We kept at the fifteen dollars to start low. It was something new to the city. Anything new gets a lot of controversy. I think it's been, Nicole, ten, twelve years?
Yeah, and it hasn't changed.
I mean, we did not raise the fee schedule on it. I mean, I would not be opposed at all to this year do a fifty percent or keep it a twenty-five dollar even number, and the next year finish it out and go to the thirty.
Yeah, I think, uh, just for budgetary purposes, this, uh, the, the thirty was needed to cover the cost of the full-time clerical, so that's why the number was kinda set at thirty. But so any number you choose below thirty, that's just as a, you're gonna have to make that up in the general tax levies all, so, whatever you wanna do.
The difference.
Yep, the difference.
Okay.
I guess for Nicole, do we have a number? If we would be at twenty-five versus thirty, what would, how much difference that would be in our?
Right now, at fifteen dollars, it's about twenty-three thousand dollars a year, so doubling it, of course, would go to forty-six thousand, so.
Probably.
Quick math in my head.
Well.
About seven.
If. Probably be forty grand.
Thirty-three.
Be seven thousand, about seventy-five hundred dollars short.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if you went to twenty-five, every five dollar fee would generate roughly seventy-five hundred dollars.
Or would it make more sense just to have the one raise and just be done?
Yeah, I think covering costs probably is, it's, it's not that large of an increase. I mean, it's a relatively small amount. If we're gonna, I mean, especially if you're doing twenty-five and thirty, it's five dollars.
Right.
I think.
Hmm.
Do it all in one and.
I'm fine doing it all in one. I think then we should maybe look at a annual fee then for the twenty-plus unit, you know, where that come out at. Because then we might be a little low there if we're at thirty for base.
Did you put anything in different for the?
No, it's just a flat.
We've got the, the flat fee.
We don't have any extra other for more than twenty units, so we don't know.
Oh, we don't have, okay.
Or any extra administration cost or anything in our fee schedule.
Probably less confusing leaving it at flat and done with it.
Flat, mm, yeah.
That's what I, it'd be a lot easier for us if we left it at a flat fee rather than.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I mean.
Twenty units would be, that last numbers would be changed too, right?
But we wouldn't have no twenty units or any of those. It would be fifteen dollars or thirty dollars or whatever we set it at across the board. You got twenty units, thirty units, it's that times that.
We, we use a tw- we use a twenty unit mark because some of them had where, the more you had, the less it was, and that, that's why we put the, the annual fee for twenty units. If you look next to it, it's, there's still the annual fee for the one unit. Comes out to seventy-seven, seventy-five, or one sixty-one, that kinda thing.
So the impact, though, on those larger units is gonna be a lot, quite a bit greater. I mean, you know, if it, right now, if it's three hundred, it's gonna be six hundred dollars.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
For twenty units.
But at, at the same time, from an inspection perspective, it, it takes the same amount of time
Yeah.
to do
Yeah.
one unit in a fifty-unit complex than it does in one unit in a four-unit complex.
Correct.
The, the expense side is the time it takes for the inspector to go through. If it takes thirty minutes to each one, yeah, it's the same cost per unit.
Yeah.
Correct. I, I have no problem either way. Do it once and get it over with, maybe.
Yeah, I have it support.
I'll offer the motion and adopt the ordinance seventeen dash zero two zero, fifth series, with a thirty-dollar fire inspection fee. Am I saying that correctly?
Rental inspection.
Rental inspection fee. Thank you.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Probably another ten years before it'll go up again, so, once you remind us.
I guess that's something, you know, that maybe Paul should just kinda keep track of is how much time is spent on it and stuff like that, and instead of waiting fifteen years, bring them in a lot sooner if we need to, rather than take doubles, so. No more discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? No. Motion carries. Item five A. First reading of ordinance number seventeen dash zero two one, fifth series, amending section nine point oh four of the city code of the city of New Ulm relative to zoning in said city. Roger.
Ordinance number seventeen dash zero two one, fifth series, city of New Ulm, Brown County, Minnesota, and ordinance amending section nine point oh four of the city code of the city of New Ulm relative to zoning in said city. Be ordained by the city council of the city of New Ulm. Section one, that the zoning map referenced in subdivision two of section nine point oh four of the city code of the city of New Ulm is hereby amended as follows. Following described property, heretofore zoned R three, multiple-family residence district, is hereby re-designated and rezoned to B two, service business district. At part of the northeast quarter, the southeast quarter of section thirteen, township one ten north, range thirty-one west, city of New Ulm, Brown County, Minnesota, described as follows. Beginning at the most westerly corner of Lot one, block one, directman subdivision, according to the recorded plant thereof, then south thirty-four degrees, twenty-four minutes, twenty seconds, twenty-six seconds east, on the southwesterly line of said Lot one, a distance of three hundred thirty-eight point zero nine feet. Then south fifty-five degrees, forty-four minutes, nine se- zero nine seconds west, a distance of two hundred ninety-six point sixty-eight feet. To the east line of North Highland Avenue is dedicated for the plant of North Highland Avenue Second Edition. Then to north thirteen degrees, sixteen minutes, thirty-eight seconds west, on said east line, a distance of eighty-one point seven zero feet. Then snortherly, three hundred eighty-five point three zero feet on a tangential curve to the right, having a radius of four hundred fifty feet, and a central angle of forty-nine degrees, zero three minutes, twenty-nine seconds to the point of beginning. Parcel contains one point five three acres of land. Section two, that the city engineer is hereby ordered to make the necessary alterations to the official map of the city of New Ulm to reflect these changes. Section three, that this ordinance shall take effect and shall be enforced thirty days from and after its adoption, approval, and publication.
Thank you, Roger. Item number five B. First reading of ordinance number seventeen dash zero two two, fifth series, amending the city code, city of New Ulm, relative, uh, to combine the Board of Zoning Adjustment and the Planning Commission in said city. Roger.
Ordinance number seventeen dash zero two two, fifth series, city of New Ulm, Brown County, Minnesota, and ordinance amending the city code to combine the Board of Zoning Adjustment with the Planning Commission. Be ordained by the city council of the city of New Ulm. Section one, the chapter three of the city code of the city of New Ulm is hereby amended, it's in its entirety to read as follows. Section three point oh four, Board of Appeals and Adjustments. Pursuant to Minnesota statutes, section four six two point three five four, a Board of Appeals and Adjustments is hereby created and continued. The city's planning commission shall serve as the Board of Appeals and Adjustments for the city. Subdivision one duties. The commission shall have the following duties. A, the commission shall hear and make recommendations with respect to appeals from any ordered decision or determination made by an administrative officer in the enforcement of the land use regulation. B, the commission shall hear requests for variances from the literal provisions of the land use regulation in accordance with the provisions of Minnesota statutes, section four six two point three five seven. C, the commission shall hear appeals from the denial of a building permit for structures within the limits of a mapped street pursuant to Minnesota statutes, section four six two point three five nine. D, the commission shall hear requests for variances from the literal provisions of the land subdivision and planning regulation in accordance with the provisions of section ten point ten of the city code. Section three point zero nine, Planning Commission. Subdivision one, establishment and composition. A planning commission is hereby established. Shall be composed of seven appointed members. The planning commission is hereby designated the planning agency of the city of New Ulm in accordance with Minnesota statutes, section four six two point three five four. Subdivision two duties. The planning commission shall serve as the, an advisory body to the city council in matters of directing the future physical development of the city. The planning commission shall conduct hearings and make recommendations to the city council on all applications for conditional use permits pursuant to provisions of section nine point eight two of the city code. Planning commission shall, upon request of the city council, make studies, investigations, and recommendations to the city council on matters affecting zoning, planning, and public improvements. The planning commission shall adopt a plan and map for future development and land use, and may, with the consent of the city council, prepare a capital improvements program for the purpose of determining priorities and apportioning the costs of scheduled public improvements. The planning commission shall have those further powers and duties assigned to it by Minnesota statutes, section four six two point three five one to four six two point three six four, is amended or replaced. The planning commission shall further be vested with such authority as is hereinafter provided. Section two, the chapter nine of the city code of the city of New Ulm is hereby amended in its entirety to read as follows. Uh, section nine point eight zero enforcement, subdivision four, appeal. Any person objecting to the ruling of any official on the administration of the provisions of this chapter shall have the right of appeal to the planning commission. Section nine point eight one, granting of variances and adjustments. Subdivision two, hearing. Upon receipt of an application, the zoning administrator shall set a time and place for a public hearing on such application before the planning commission. At least ten days before the date of hearing, a notice of the hearing shall be published once in the official newspaper of the city. The planning commission shall conduct such hearings and shall make recommendations to the city council concerning requested adjustments, and in exceptions to any of the provisions of the chapter to the extent of the following, and no further. Subdivision three, findings. The planning commission shall not recommend the granting of any application, and the city council shall not grant any application unless the requirements of subdivision two A above and the following factors are determined to be fulfilled. At the hearing, the applicant shall present a statement and evidence in such form as the planning commission may require to show compliance with these requirements. A, that there are special circumstances or conditions affecting the land, building, or use referred to in the application that justify finding of practical difficulties as such term is defined above. B, that the granting of the application will not have a material adverse effect on the health or safety of persons residing or working in the area adjacent to the property, the applicant will not materially, be materially detrimental to the public welfare, welfare, or injurious to property or improvements in the area adjacent to the property of the applicant. The planning commission may, in its discretion, continue hearing for the purpose of making further investigation or obtaining further information from the applicant or otherwise. Subdivision four, city council approval. In all cases in which adjustments or variances are either recommended or opposed by the planning commission, a report of the commission's determination shall be made to the city council at its next regular meeting. Notwithstanding the recommendation of or opposition to a permit by the planning commission, the city council may grant or deny such permit in conformance with the requirements of this section. The city council shall also specify conditions that are necessary to substantially secure the objectives of the regulation or provision to which the adjustment or variance is granted. The city council shall require such evidence and guarantees as it may deem necessary to ensure compliance with the conditions designated in connection therewith. Section three, that section ten point ten of the city code of the city of New Ulm is hereby amended in its entirety to read as follows. Section ten point ten, variances. An application for a variance to the requirements of this chapter may be submitted in writing to the city manager stating fully and clearly all facts relied upon by the applicant. The application may be supplemented with maps, plans, or other additional data that may aid the planning commission in the analysis of the proposed variance. Overall plans for any development shall be included with such covenants, restrictions, or other legal provisions necessary. Such application shall be forthwith transmitted to the planning commission for consideration and recommendation of the city council in accordance with the standards and procedures set forth in subdivisions two through four of section nine point eight one of the city code. Section four, that chapter twelve of the city code of the city of New Ulm is hereby amended in its entirety to read as follows. Section twelve point zero five, flood fringe district, subdivision five, standards for all flood fringe uses. A, all new principal structures must have vehicular access at or above an elevation not more than two feet below the area for flood protection elevation. If a variance to this requirement is granted, the planning commission must specify limitations on the period of use or occupancy of the structure for times of flooding, and only after determining that adequate flood warning time and local flood emergency response procedures exist. Subdivision twelve point ten, administration, subdivision three, planning commission. A, rules. Planning commission, the planning commission, shall follow the rules for the conduct of business at fourth and section three point oh four and three point oh nine of the city code, and may exercise all of the powers conferred on planning commissions by state law. B, administrative review. The commission shall hear and decide appeals where it is alleged that there's an error in any order required. The commission shall hear and decide appeals where it is alleged that there is an error in any order requirement decision or determination made by an administrative official in the enforcement or administration of this chapter. C, variances. In accordance with section nine point eight one of the city code, the commission may recommend to the city council such relief or variance from the terms of this chapter as will not be contrary to the public interest and only for those circumstances such as any, as hardship, practical difficulties, or circumstances unique to the property under consideration. When recommending the granting of such variance, the commission shall clearly identify in writing the specific conditions that existed consistent with the criteria specified in this chapter, any other zoning regulations of the city, and in the prospective enabling legislation that justify the granting of the variance. No variance shall have the effect of allowing in any district, uses prohibited in that district, permit a lower degree of flood protection than the regulatory flood protection elevation for the particular area, or permit standards lower than those required by state law. The following additional variance criteria of the Federal Emergency Management Agency must be satisfied. D, hearings. Upon filing with the planning commission of an appeal from a decision of the zoning administration, administrator, or an application for a variance, the commission shall fix a reasonable time for a hearing and give due notice to the parties in interest as specified by law. Hearings shall be conducted in accordance with section nine point eight one, subdivision two of the city code. The commission shall submit by mail to the commissioner of natural resources a copy of the application for proposed, for proposed variances sufficiently in advance that the commissioner will receive at least ten days' notice of the hearing. E, decisions. The planning commission shall arrive at a decision on such appeal or variance within fifteen days of the hearing thereon. In passing upon an appeal, the commission may, so long as such action is in conformity with the provisions of this chapter, reverse or affirm wholly or in part or modify the order, requirement, decision, or determination of the zoning administrator or other public official. It shall make its decision in writing, sending forth the findings of fact and the reasons for its decisions, and recommending the granting of a variance, the commission may prescribe appropriate conditions and safeguards such as those specified in section twelve point ten, subdivision four F, which are in conformity with the purposes of this chapter. Violations of such conditions and safeguards, made a part of the terms under which the variance is granted, shall be deemed a violation of this chapter punishable under section twelve point twelve. A copy of all decisions granting variances shall be forwarded by mail to the commissioner of natural resources within ten days of such action. F, appeals. Appeals from any decision of the planning commission may be made as provided in the city charter, other chapters of the city code, or Minnesota statutes. Section five, that this ordinance shall take effect and shall be enforced thirty days from and after its adoption, approval, and publication.
Thank you, Roger. Now you can take a deep breath.
Thank you.
Good job. Uh, item five C. Consider offering a resolution, waive the reading to accept donations offered to the city park and rec department for identified purposes.
I'll offer a resolution, waive the reading, to accept the following gifts. One hundred dollars from New Ulm High School, class of nineteen sixty-seven, for the German Park paper stones and improvements. Hundred and fifty dollars from Happy Joe's for the Herman K. Five Tot Trot. And from the Dog Park, a hundred dollars from New Ulm Real Estate, twenty-five dollars from Broadway Chiropractic, five, twenty-five dollars from Fisher Law, and three thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars from the Happy Trails Dog Park Group. And five hundred from Paul's Electric for the Days of Play, and fifteen hundred dollars from that wonderful Optimus Club for the Days of Play as well. Total six thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars.
We got a motion and a second off the resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion?
Nice donations.
That sounds like the mayor be busy. Oh, in favor, oh, excuse me. Finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item five D. Consider authorizing a grant application from the Na- National Recreation and Parks Association for physical activity programs to train fitness instructors. You have something on that, Tom? You'd like to explain to us?
Tom Schmitz, Park and Recreation Department. President Schmitz and counselors, this is just simply an opportunity to apply for a grant from NRPA uh, to the tune of two thousand dollars with zero, uh, local match requirement to train two of our fitness instructors. I recommend you proceed.
Thank you.
With that being said, I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, authorize a grant application to the National Recreation and Parks Association for purchasing a physical activity program to train New Ulm Park and Rec again, Park and Recreation Fitness Instructors.
Second.
We got a motion and a second off the resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? See none. Finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item five E. Consider amending leasing, le- amended the leases for the Riverside and Keasling Park House, or Keasling Building, excuse me.
President Schmitz and counselors. Tom Schmitz from the Park and Recreation Department. You have before you a decision to make. Uh, we have lease agreements with two private entities, one at the Keasling House and one at Riverside Park. Uh, the Keasling House lease, um, leasee has been heating the house modestly this past winter. Uh, the leasee of the Riverside Park building has not been heating the building in the wintertime because they don't use it in the wintertime. In consultation with the building official, the building official recommends a modest, uh, heat level be maintained in the building, in the buildings over the winter, uh, to, uh, preserve them and reduce any potential degradation. So you have before you information in the packet. The Park and Recreation Commission has recommended that we go ahead and um, take on the heat bills at these two buildings. Coalition for Clean Minnesota River, um, tenant at Riverside Park Building has stated that, uh, they cannot afford to heat the building in the winter. The leases do not require them to. The leases require them to pay utilities, uh, but they don't require, um, the leasee
So Mr. Chair, oh, sorry. Go ahead. Um, how many years has it not been heated?
My estimate would probably be, eh, in the ballpark of ten.
So why all of a sudden now?
It became, uh, apparent to the building official and our facilities maintenance supervisor, and those two professionals.
So they're noticing damage as a result of not keeping it heated in the winter months?
I don't know how much damage has been noted, but, uh, those experts are saying that letting a building freeze solid basically is not wise.
If I can kinda help Tom along on that, I'm actually the one that, once I found out attending the Vision Twenty Twenty meetings, that the building wasn't being heated, it was brought to my attention. I'm the one that asked it to be brought to the parks' attention. If you do a little history on it, when the Parks Department was using it, the building was used, it was heated all winter. They actually used it as a workshop. And it was at oh five, I believe the lease agreement went into effect?
I think so.
River Coalition. Yeah, that time, assuming they, they weren't heating the building. And I'm gonna say, we noticed damage, Tom, was it six, seven, eight years ago? We did a major tuck pointing on the base of the structure.
Yes, we did do some tuck pointing.
One item that, anybody with historic buildings will tell you, building officials, experts who I've dealt with, with historians on buildings, you need to maintain some type of climate control in the building or they're gonna deteriorate fast. And that's the reason I brought it to the Park and Rec Department, and now it's in front of the city council. I don't believe a leasee should be the one that dictates to us, no, we're gonna heat your building or we're not. We don't care what happens to it. That's the reason it's here.
Do they have any plans to do anything in the building now that, if, if we as a group decide to heat it tonight?
My understanding is that they do not plan to program it. My recommendation would be if they do plan winter programming, then we have to reevaluate the arrangement. I'm also recommending that we only consider covering the cost of heat and not water and sanitary. Um, at Riverside, it's electric heat. Uh, at Keasling, it's natural gas forced air furnace. So we wouldn't be high, we wouldn't be paying for the electric bill, water, and sewer at Keasling.
One other comment, I mean, the leasee did contact me. I don't know how the lease agreement was set up in oh five. Who was supposed to pay what? But he used examples, and maybe you can answer, Tom, like, does, does his electric bill pay for the basketball lights?
At Riverside Park, we only have one electric meter. Um, it's on the building and it does, uh, it meters the electricity at the basketball court.
And, and then also, I mean, it's just a tiny.
And gertie the goose.
That's also what he brought. I know they're minute, they're little things, but the electric bill creeps.
Yes, and there's special events that take place from time to time at Riverside Park, uh, in which there are additional um, electrical outlets for festivals and events. And that all goes through the one electric meter, um, on the building that CCMR has been paying in the past.
But if you go back to when those leases were signed, the people within those buildings were so happy to have that building that they were willing to accept those costs. Uh, this, these were not surprises. These were known at the time.
Yes.
And they said, well, no problem. Well, I'll pay for that because I get this building and I get to use it for my educational thing. This, so it wasn't a, it wasn't an unknown thing that just popped up. They knew it before they signed.
Correct, correct, and that there's no rent involved, so they're, they were quite happy about the rent free, so, okay, we'll cover the utilities.
Do we have a guestimate cost on this, um, electric baseboard? I assume it's gonna be a lot more expensive than, uh, the gas furnace, right? Or no?
Yes, we have information on there from Keasling House, but we do not have records on Riverside Park.
We don't, do you have a guestimate on that?
No, I do not.
Wanna guess that?
No, I don't wanna guess that.
That's an old building. Not gonna be cheap.
I mean, we're not talking about heating it at comfort of your home, sixty-eight degrees.
Forty-five degrees.
Probably talking forty-five, fifty.
Are we, what winterization do, gets done? Being it's sat these, how many years? Do we go on and winterize it? Is there water in?
What, what we've done in the past is we've drained water out of the building. We've disconnected the water supply and removed the meter and so on.
I guess I'm gonna cut in too. But Dave made the comment, I happened to have been invited to one of the meetings that the Twenty Twenty Vision had. And I guess I was just as shocked as Dave was, is that we got a building sitting down there that we're actually using for education, for our younger generation, for wildlife, to wildflowers, to you name it. We got a instructor that comes in there free of charge, volunteer that teaches the kids. And he did make a comment that it wasn't being heated, so they could never use it in the winter, anything like that. And I guess my comment was that I can't believe it that we can have a multimillion dollar budget for Parks and Rec and we can't afford a thousand dollars to heat a building, to preserve it, and so on, so forth. We're gonna have thousands of dollars coming with this renewed project. If we cannot afford to heat that one building, we could drop all the other projects because it's ridiculous. If we can't maintain what we already have, why you wanna add more? So, to me, it's a no-brainer. The only question I have is what's the difference between the Riverside building and the Keasling building? I mean, far as the lease agreement. What's, what's be, what's taking place in the Keasling House?
There's very little difference between the two lease agreements.
Is there anything going on in there?
Yes, uh, they do, um, historical interpretive programming in the summertime. Basically from Memorial Weekend through Labor Day, where they do living history.
So this is open to the public, so people can walk in and get an education, or is this a private thing?
No, it's open to the public.
It is.
Yeah.
You'll, you'll see it in the newspaper periodically. They'll show how, how they made bread or something.
Okay, I got no problem with it, then.
And, and there's one other comment.
Anything that's through an education, I'm for.
I, I wanna make a comment on, uh, the gentleman who does, does do the river education and the environmental in the building. And he made that comment about, well, when school is on, he can't bus kids down there to have it because we have no heat. And, and I'm gonna speak for him. We're not just talking a hundred kids here. We're not talking just five hundred kids. They bus them in from all over the area. And I guess it's been a big, uh, hit with this environmental teaching. And yet, we as a city can't, again, I'm gonna go on to what, uh, Counselor Schmidt said. We can't afford to heat that for our young people to come down here and be educated. I just, after the Vision Twenty Twenty meeting, I had a big problem with that.
I have a new vision.
Mister, Mister President?
Yes.
Uh, considering the discussion the council members have had, uh, in the event that the council was gonna direct that action be taken for the city to be responsible for paying utilities or one or either of the properties, um, as the guy who might be drafting it or our office, I would need to know, what's the timeframe that you're interested in? We would need to have a start and an end date. Uh, we'd also need to confirm which utilities, um, for which properties. It's not clear to me yet if the school building has, if it has an active water service, or if it's been permanently disconnected.
There is, uh, water and sanitary sewer in the Riverside Park building.
Because if it's heated, I don't know if someone would use it, but we just need to be specific about what exactly we're paying for.
Well, I think you gotta pick up the utilities. Um, one of the other things that they informed us is they got a water heater around there to wash your hands, and they know hot water because they don't wanna pay the utilities. I mean, or they can't.
Yeah, I, I mean, again, it, it's open to our public, they're educating kids, and when you hear this, like the restroom, I mean, good God, we can't afford to upraise the restroom and buy us a new stool? I have issues with that with a three point seven five million dollar park budget. I really do.
Um, I, I, I agree with you, but what happens to every other building that we have rental rooms and, and, um, you know, like, any other room that we rent out of any building? You know, there's a fee for that. We charge a fee. I don't know, is it fair?
But a lot of those, from what I'm familiar with, those fees, those are used for private use. This here is for our benefit. This is education. It's, it's for our city.
There's a lot, there's a lot of nonprofits though that might benefit from having that building if they know they don't have to pay the utilities or.
Well, I guess I'm gonna bring one other thing up that I just got back from the National League of Cities. We were on a tour, and one of the things that they made a comment was is it was a seventy-four acre partial property that somebody, developer came in and was gonna redevelop. And they made the comment, uh, while you're setting a precedent. And they said, get that out of your head. You aren't setting a precedent. What you're doing is you're doing something to make something work for one particular project. You can do whatever you want as a city council for the rest. If you're gonna always worry about what a precedent's setting, you're never gonna accomplish nothing. And to me, this isn't setting a precedent. If somebody else wants to come in, come in, but justify it. I seen what takes place down at the Riverside, and that's what I'm gonna talk about mainly, is it is definitely an education. I seen some of the plans that they're talking about for a patio out in the back and things like that, and maybe someday getting the restrooms done in the basement and things, and you gotta maintain them. I'm sorry.
I would assume it's possible they might do, might do some stuff in the winter down the road if they.
If it's heated, they, I'm sure they would.
What about the, I wanna know about the utilities at the Keasling House. What, what's paid and not paid there right now?
Um, it's got normal full utilities that you would expect in a home.
In a whole regular house, so it's everything.
Everything, and, um, the leaseholder, Kathleen Backer, has been paying those in full monthly year round.
So this proposal then is that we would pay for the heat, but she would still continue to pay the other utilities?
That was the, uh, the proposal that I presented to you.
That's what my understanding is, right.
Mister President, the, the last thing I would have a question, I just, because I've not really been to any of the, either place while they've been using it for these activities. Uh, my understanding is that the group using the Riverside Park building is not charging schools? Is that correct?
I do not know that.
No, I know they don't.
And I don't know if, um, Ms. Backer is charging, if she has an event. And I don't know if that would make any difference to you. Because one is an organization that's a nonprofit. Um, I'm not sure if Kathleen has got her set up as a formal nonprofit, but I believe it's pretty much her.
I guess that's the question I have. What's the difference between the two places?
So maybe we need to.
Is the revenue coming into one and not in the other, or whatever?
I think there may be a modest fee involved for, uh, programs at the Keasling House, but I'm not positive.
So maybe you wanna table both of these and just get a little more info? You probably want more info.
It's not getting any warmer outside. I understand the concern, but maybe you might look at them differently depending upon if one of them is a profit maker and one is not.
Yeah, I, I would recommend a, more of a two-step approach here. Uh, deal with the heat right now, and then maybe look at the leases. Uh, because even though the lease at the, uh, at Riverside Park specifically states it's for the footprint of the building, there's a lot of stuff happens outside that building without the owner actually even knowing about it.
The owner or the tenant?
What's that?
The owner or the tenant?
The, the tenant is, 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 uh, flower beds and, and activities that occur outside, but they're technically, their lease is only for the. and activities that occur outside, but they're technically, their lease is only for the inside of the building. And so we may want to look at the leases in those respects also. Well, if we're gonna look at them, let's look at all of the activities that are going on there. And and say either either restrict it to the inside. I mean, there's this, this last fall, there were things that were occurring outside.
Mister Mister President, I think I think the lease is clear on that. As the city managers point out, that's really more a matter of enforcement.
Right.
Because I think the language is there. The last thing I'm gonna be saying on this is that in looking at these leases, the other things we would need to include, which I think would go along with this, is at least during the time we're paying for the utilities, we're in charge of having the right to set them, turn them on or off. And that we're gonna have access to the building. Because right now, we technically don't have that. So I would make sure to include that if you wanna move forward with either of these.
So like lock boxes over the utilities, so people can't crank it up to ninety or?
Right, it would, whatever we would need to do with PUC, but but we would be in charge of that if we're paying for it.
From start to to finish, are we, Tom, would you recommend like from uh October first to uh an April first? That's six months.
Yeah, the dates I had put down on the action form were November one to March thirty-first. But you could certainly modify those, council.
Do we really have to set a date to heat a building?
Yeah, because otherwise it's their financial responsibility. So they need to know when they're paying for it, and we need to know, I think billing needs to know. You know, 'cause I'm assuming they're gonna have to change the billing twice a year. And get it back to the tenant when it's their responsibility.
Oh, and it's gonna depend on how it's metered too. I mean, if if the Riverside building's all electric heat and they're using the electric for other things as well, do we put a separate meter on the electric heat? To know who's paying what portion, or how is that split?
Because technically they have the right to use it twelve months out of the year. And so now we're subsidizing their cost for that as well, just because of the nature of the heat. But it doesn't sound like they are. I don't know if they would if it was heated.
We, I'm I'm not certain if they will program in the winter, uh, but anything's possible. And maybe it's just a one-year arrangement or this winter and we.
And maybe the council would wanna facilitate that. If they would do something in the winter, so they could use the building if it was heated. Maybe you think that's a good idea. That's your decision. But I do need to know the dates.
It seemed so simple at the beginning.
I can always take care of that.
My my opinion is the building needs to be heated. I don't know about the exact date, but I don't think we want the buildings to freeze up.
I think it's our obligation to maintain them, historic, so I guess I'll throw out October one to April one for a date to get something rolling here. And let's get the heat on and maintain the heat and bring it back for future discussion, I think, for looking at the leases and.
I'll second that.
Uh, councillor Mack, if I may interrupt, could could be, have a friendly amendment to uh March thirty-first? So it'd be the end of the month? So it'd be starting April first?
Sure.
Okay.
So you wanna go?
October first, uh, March thirty-first?
October first, March thirty-first.
Okay, thank you.
That's fine.
And do you wanna be specific in that arrangement that saying that it's the electric bill for Riverside and the natural gas bill for Kiesling House?
Is there also a clause in the motion that uh directing staff to review both leases and come back in the future with proposed lease changes?
I think you may have that part of it.
That was part of that.
Thank you.
Come back for discussion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Offer resolution, waive reading, changing it, and heating the buildings. Any more discussion? See enough? Finance director, please call a roll.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item five F, consider a resolution approving the grant from the New Ulm Area Foundation and authorizing the fire chief to sign a memorandum and an understanding for the fu- funding of the print designation and restoration project for historic items held by the New Ulm Fire Department. Anybody need anything explained on that? We got Chris here, otherwise.
Wiley gonna present on this?
Before uh res, we're waiting for Chris to come up. Does the fire department have three dollars and thirty-one cents in their budget for this? All right.
Chris Wiley, New Ulm Library. President Schmitz and councillors, this is a continuation of a project that we've been talking about for a year now. Last December, you approved um the fire department to get a grant to look at all of their historic items, including photographs and objects and the fire equipment. We had a conservator come in July, and one of her recommendations was to take a look at the historic firefighter photos. This was a project that our fire chief was really interested in because the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the fire department is coming up in twenty twenty. And we want to reconstruct these historic photos. If New Cat would pull up the TV screen. Thank you. Just to give you an example of uh this particular project, the fire department has a lot of objects, and so we're going to have to do this in small phases. And this particular project um was pinpointed um because of this hundred and fiftieth anniversary. This is the nineteen thirteen firefighter departmental photo uh and frame. Many years ago, the photos were removed from the frame, and they were put into scrapbooks. So we still have the original frame on this one, and we still have the original photographs, but of course, they're not together anymore. This is the nineteen thirty-one where the same thing was happened. The photographs were taken out of this and put into scrapbooks that look like this. Now, at this point in time, we have a volunteer who is taking all of those images and digitizing them at a very high resolution for archival purposes. And then what we wanna do is recreate this image. Fix up the frame and hang the uh the digitized version of this, and then keep the original photographs in storage. Because they would degrade over time if if we had those in photographs out in public. Here are the digitized versions at a very high resolution. You can see on the left, um, that's a very old one, and the one on the right is from nineteen seventy. The nineteen seventy is actually in worse condition because of the way color photography um was at that time. It's not very good condition. The one on the left is in much better shape. We went to the New Ulm Area Foundation to get a grant of forty-three hundred dollars to turn these digitized images into what you see here. They would be put back. We would have someone restore what's in the frame, fix up the frame itself, and then it would be hung in the fire department. New Ulm Area Foundation did uh award us a grant of forty-three hundred dollars, and I'm here before you to show you what we're doing and to ask you to approve the grant so that we can go ahead and continue this project. This is just one small piece of many at the fire department and around the city, uh, where we're trying to um preserve the city's history. And one more picture I wanted to show you. This is uh engine number three outside of this building. Uh, this is just another uh piece of history that we're getting digitized and preserved. These were actually this picture was actually part of one of those large frames. One other piece of the puzzle is once those images are digitized, we're we're prioritizing actually getting those digitized right now. But they will go on the newulmarccollection.org website, which is what you see here. Um, this is part of the Fred Johnson collection. So we have another volunteer working on this piece. If you look at newulmarccollection.org, we have a volunteer coming every week. And you can see the progress that she's making on this. And um what you see here are a couple of Fred Johnson collection photos. And they're described, tell you who the person is. And again, we're digitizing these at a very high resolution for archival purposes. And then we put them on the website for the general public. And really neat, uh, we were contacted by someone in Massachusetts who wants to use one of these, uh, perhaps use one of these in a book he's writing. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
They would get the image, not the original.
With um credit being given to the city of New Ulm as the owner of the uh original object.
Well, I do see it doesn't cover the entire cost. Um, it's missing about three dollars, but uh uh with that, I'll offer the resolution and waive the reading to approve this grant.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Offer resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion?
Just a thank you to Chris and Fire Chief for all the work you've done on it.
Yeah, it's gonna be a great, great project. And the volunteers.
Yeah, and the volunteers.
Yeah, it looks great. No one of them, and they work hard.
All right, no more discussion. Finance director, please call a roll.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Chris.
Thank you.
Item five G, consider a resolution regarding the League of Minnesota City's insurance trust liability coverage option for two thousand eighteen. Not to waive the monetary limits on the municipal tort liability es- established by the Minnesota statute four sixty-six dash zero four, accepting liability coverage limits of fif- one point five million from the League of Minnesota City's Insurance Trust effective January first, two thousand eighteen, and authorizing the city manager to execute the waiver for on behalf of the city of New Ulm.
I'll move it.
Second. We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Just kind of an annual thing we do.
See enough? On paper, say aye.
Oh, it's a resolution.
Oh, sorry, resolution.
Councillor Fisher? Yes. Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. And before we adjourned, I noticed a couple walked into the meeting. Is there anything that you had or that was probably on the schedule? Nope? We went, we covered everything that was on the agenda already.
Mister Chairman, these are the individuals that wrote the letter of objection on it during a public hearing for alley one sixty-nine south of center.
Okay. What took place on that is we did approve the
The assessment rule?
Yeah, assessments. So, we did read your letter publicly, but we did approve the assessments.
What we wanted to address was the the problem with the water.
Right.
That they didn't address the drainage?
Just come up to the mics, take your name and address for the record, and then we got it recorded.
Kim Riger. Um, we live at three thirteen South Broadway, New Ulm. Um, the redoing of the alley further made the water problem worse in our alley. Um, we're kind of the low spot in the alley, and they didn't address that when they when they raised, they keep raising it up. And we, you know, we were probably one of the first houses that was there. And we found out after the fact that they put a drainage
Drainage tile in the block down from us.
On the block down from us, but they didn't address it where we were. And you know, that we have, we came several times to try to find somebody and talk to them at the courthouse and or here. And um we really don't have a solution. I mean, we don't know what to do, you know? How are we gonna solve our problem with the drainage? I have pictures if you wanna look at them.
Well, we we had the engineering department prior to approving the assessments, they had pictures that they showed us of back taken in nineteen ninety-something or whatever it was, or nineteen seventy, or whatever it happened to be when it was originally installed, and what it looked like in ninety-five or whatever. And with the reconstruction of it, what it looks like now, and.
Well, they made a cutout between our lot and our neighbor's lot. Where they didn't, mo- mostly the other side of the alley, they butted the tar right up to the existing um driveways and things like that. And on our side, it just was like a drop-off. And then when we did complain, then they came and threw some gravel in there. But when when we have the water problem in in the spring, when the snow melts, that gravel's just gonna turn to mush, and we're gonna end up you know, it's a big problem there too. There's just nowhere for that water to go.
Yeah, from what I noticed looking at the pictures that.
Did they show you them with the water?
Yes. But it looks like there was no concrete or anything from the garage out to the alley, correct?
There was, but it it.
There was tar there at one time, but it's kind of eroded away.
Yeah.
Because I'm, I believe.
Even if that case, they'd still have the water puddling there, even if you have the tar and whatnot because of the dip down.
Yeah, they went, they kept raising it up, and then now they're like a good six, eight inches up higher than what our existing cement was. So, you know, we.
According to our engineer, so he states that there has never been a change to the grade.
Mister President, I I looked at the nineteen seventy-one plan file, and actually the grade was lowered on each end of the alley a foot. Stayed the same in the middle, and the one we did in two thousand sixteen, it never was raised at all. So I have no knowledge of that ever being raised, so I'm not quite sure where that information is coming from. It's pretty much been that way since nineteen seventy-one.
Right, but previous to that, I'm sure it was down.
No, the existing grades were lowered in that alley in nineteen seventy-one.
Well, it's possible, Steve. It's possible. What he's saying is before the alley was ever done, but then there was no grade established when the garage was built, you know, an official grade.
We have the existing cross-sections from nineteen seventy-one that showed the alley was lowered. So, yeah, I've I've very familiar with the situation. You you've got, in my opinion, a localized low spot in your backyard. It's a private drainage issue. You're gonna have to deal with it.
Well, I I object to being assessed for something that increased our problem.
You you were of, we didn't increase your problem. We left the alley grade where it was. You had the same problem before. We saw it in the pictures. I I don't need to see those. We showed the pictures to the council.
On the other side of the alley, you can see that they they went straight up to where the sidewalks were.
Yes, because that was in existing condition.
Right, and us, they they got a cutout. It's like two feet cut out around us, so so even if we did put cement up to that point, we'd still have that two-foot gap there.
We replaced what was there, is all I can tell you. It was clearly shown on the pictures. We have a video of the 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 uh existing conditions prior to the reconstruction. Um, we just can't run eighteen thousand dollar storm pipe to take one low area that you could probably resolve for a few hundred bucks.
How?
A little more than a few hundred bucks.
How could we do that? I mean.
That's raising the whole garage and everything.
But filling it in, that would bring it up above our garage.
But we did not raise, we did not raise that alley grade. It has never been raised.
All right, unless I knew it wouldn't get anywhere anyway.
Well, we just, we just fill that when there's an existing problem, and there's a solution to it that the city has that they, just because we're one or two households, we're as important as the rest of the households in town.
I understand that, and I talked to your husband, and we had estimated it'd be about eighteen thousand dollars for that. You would have been the only benefiting property. And the city council would have expected you to bear most of that cost.
Why couldn't you have raised the, that area just with tar in it or whatever cement for that?
Because as you suggested, your your garage is too low.
Exactly.
Well.
But.
I know what's going on there, Mister.
I know, but what I'm saying is even if you would have raised, eventually we'd have to raise it ourselves. I understand that, but I can't afford that right now.
I I have difficulty getting out of the, out of the yard into the alley.
I understand that. That's your only access. You have nothing from Broadway. You have no parking. You're parking out into the alley right away to try and avoid that low spot. I understand what's going on there.
And and nobody takes the snow away in the in the wintertime, so it builds. And in a bad winter, we get, you know, almost a half a foot of water there. It's like a lake. It just doesn't seem right that. Something couldn't be done.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
But no more business? Meeting adjourned.
But no more business? Meeting adjourned.